Okay, hello everybody, thank you. We're ready to open up our meeting at, or let's call the meeting to order at 6:30. First thing I'd like to do is to welcome back Margo and John with our videotape and sound people. It's been a long eighteen months since we've seen them here, and I'm glad to have them back. At the same time, we're back in our Zoom capabilities because of the hybrid movies, or hybrid movies because of the hybrid meetings, because of the uptick in COVID in the state and actually in our town a little bit this week. So, we're back and at it. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 27, 2021. I want to point out that we did make a mistake in the minutes. Only the very first one, it says Gates moved Olson second, which Jimmy weren't in attendance. We're going to change that to McDonald's second.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 27, 2021 with the changes that we just talked about.
Okay, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got four folks here. I can speak briefly, Stanley and, I'll just speak briefly. Mary, Stanley and Marion have both been alternate members for a year or so. They've both been great members, and we've had a couple of resignations, so there's room for them to move up. And that's our normal process. Folks have been the alternates, and they're both prepared and ready and hopeful to move up. Mike Donello was here a couple of weeks ago, and is here again. And Alexander Strobel, I think you guys both have had an opportunity to speak with. Nice young man who grew up in town, owns a house on Main Street, and has a business over at the industrial park. So, I don't know if we want to go through, I think we should all go through these individually, have our conversations and our votes.
Well, I'll start off, I'll make a motion to appoint Stanley W. Reinheimer to regular member, term to expire twelve one, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I think what you said is they've been, he's been an alternate member in good standing and all that stuff, so I don't see any issues with all of that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for Marion G. Stay as a regular member, term to expire twelve one, 2023. And same thing, we've already talked about her, and she's been an alternate. I'll make a motion.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion, Michael A. Donello be appointed to alternate planning and zoning, term to expire twelve one, 2022.
Second, Michael Donello, term to expire twelve one, 2022.
Any conversation? No?
I don't, I don't have any specific. I know Mike, I've gotten to know Mike in the last couple of years, and he was a, he's a mainstay at the, before COVID and with his, with the, with the issues that he feels very strongly about. And I, and I appreciate the, the intensity and the, and the tenacity or whatever that you have. I would hope that that energy and whatnot, if approved tonight, that you would apply that, you know, to the planning and zoning. I'll be honest, some of the letters that you have sent, I've taken them a little bit negative. And I don't want negativity on, I don't want negativity, period. I would like positive feedback, I'd like positive communication within all the boards. And Planning and Zoning is a very important board in the town. And being a, being a property owner in town, I think you're, you're willing to, to learn. I mean, I don't think you're coming into Planning and Zoning with planning and zoning experience, but it sounds like you have the desire to learn and do the best job that you can. And so, that being said, you know, I'm, I'm willing to let you have a, have a shot at it. That's just me.
Mike, you invited me to your lovely inn there a couple of years ago, and I thanked you. We had a lovely evening that night, talking, chatting, glass of wine. I like you, I respect you. But same thing what Jim says, some of the letters were a little strong for my liking. I'd rather have a discussion face to face outside versus a letter like this. But you do have a lot of enthusiasm, like Jim said, to bring to the town. If we can, I don't know how to say politically correct, if we can channel some of that energy to the right direction, Mike, I think you would be a great asset to it. But I don't want the negative stuff, okay? We're all grown men, we all have thick skin, we can handle, you know, insults. But on a continuous basis, I don't, I don't like that. I would love to see, and then I'll, I'm going to just get off sidetracked a little bit here. But in your letters, you said there's a lot of people in town that have a lot of great ideas and a lot of energy. Let's rewind about ten plus years ago, Jim was on the Board of Education with me. We had a collaborative meeting with Board of Education people, town people, residents. We all sat around a table, and no one really knew who each other was. And we all sat there and spearheaded what would be best for the school system. I would like to see something like that in this town. But I would like, the only way that I would be for it is if we have respect each other, we can agree to disagree, but when we walk out of that table or that meeting, we all shake hands or whatever we do today for this month, and we respect each other. That's who Dwayne Gates is, that's the way I was brought up, my morals and values. I'm not a guy that's going to talk BS behind someone, I'd rather sit and do what's best for the community. I've lived here for fifty-eight years, along with Jim, I believe this community, I love this community, and I want to keep it moving. I don't want to see it separated. Our whole lives are separated today with, with political BS. We shouldn't have that in this beautiful small town. Again, I'm not lecturing, I'm just, I went on a little tirade, I'm sorry, I don't like that, but that's, that's how I feel.
I agree.
So, Mike, I will support you, but again, let's try to channel some of that upset negativity towards positive energy, and I think you would be an asset. But some of these letters, I don't, I don't like. Arrest my case, second.
Well, it brought attention to it.
I've, I wasn't planning on saying much of anything. I appreciate your guys' input, I appreciate Mike's input. It's been five, five or so years that I've been getting input from Mike. A lot of my concerns are, have to do with Planning and Zoning in particular, and Mike's tenacity as you've described it. Planning and Zoning Commission is not an enforcement agency. It's a regulatory agency, it's a judicial agency. And it's not an agency where it is my way or the highway. It's an agency that looks at regulations. I haven't seen anything, anything in the five years of correspondence with you and conversation with you that has indicated that you have that capacity. And that has been my resistance. There are, there are a lot of other commissions on this town that, that could, that we could, that would do, do well, served by you. And I think Zoning Board of Appeals is a commission that we need to populate and is a good introduction to planning and zoning, and to regulations. But while I agree that your input and your energy to the community is positive, almost everything that I've heard from you has been negative. And that, that, and it's been very inflexible, you know? And I don't think that that's, I don't think that suits Planning and Zoning Commission, which is why I've, I've delayed this point. We are where we are, we have a, a motion and a second, and it's time for us to.
I just want to say one more thing, and again, I don't keep beating a dead horse. But when I came onto this board five years ago, I wanted to better the town deep river. I am not a yes person. People that know Dwayne Gates, I am not a yes person. There's been several times where Jimmy and I may have disagreed, but at the end of the day, we agreed to disagree. Angus and I, even though we're the same party, we agreed to disagree. But I rest assured, when apparently here in Deep River, the administration cherry picks a volunteer group to suit their needs and agenda, textbook ego politics, that's not Dwayne Gates. If I'm not doing a good enough job, I'll be glad to step aside tonight. But I believe in this community, and wholeheartedly, I do the best I possibly can with the residents of Town Deep River first and foremost. Not politics, not political lying, not Mike does my neighbor, it's because of what I believe in this community.
Motion?
Okay.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next is Alex Strobel.
Alex Strobel, alternate, term to expire twelve one, 2023.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I spoke to a young man, as we do with all the candidates, or people that aren't, another, I don't, I don't know him, but I had a good conversation with him, and I'm willing to, you know, bring some new blood into it that I don't think has any ties to anybody here, so I, I, I'll try.
I echo those, those comments, I don't, I don't know him. He was very open on the phone, and he's not left, right, center, he's not R, D, any of that, you know? It just, he, he wants to do what's best for the, best for the town, and he's been in town for a very long time. I guess he's, you know, it's, I, I liked what I heard, and he sounds very willing to, to take on the task and learn the task and go from there. And so, yeah.
Well spoken.
Yes, it was, it was a very pleasant conversation, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, I didn't say aye. Okay, that takes care of that. Item number four on the agenda is a report review from Stormwater Corp. We have a guest with us tonight, Mike Dietz from the Yukon Center for Land Use, Education, and Research, otherwise known as CLEAR. These guys, I will just do a brief introduction, Mike, and then I'll let, leave it to you. But these guys have been very generous with their time, they had a bunch of, a bunch of them came to Deep River, did a study of a number of our properties. And this is really a great addition to our MS4 program that we're already involved in and have been doing for quite a while. And the Stormwater runoff plan that they've presented to me, now to everyone, it looks very, it's very interesting. It's going to be, I think it's great for the town to start to do some of this right up front, some in, on public properties, so we can show everyone that this is where really the municipality should go, and private property owners should go as well. So, with that, I think, Mike, why don't you take over? I think you are co-host, so you can share the screen if you like.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much Angus.
Okay, we have one second.
We've got a pop up. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
I, I don't actually need.
Hang on one second, Mike, we have a technical thing we have to take care of.
Technical difficulties.
If you could help, I can be okay.
There we go.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just, for the, for these reasons, that's why I figured I would just talk a little bit about this tonight rather than trying to go through the report like we did in the other meeting.
Great.
So, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, again, I appreciate that tonight, and the opportunity to be in the minute chat about this a little bit. So, as Angus said, I'm part of the extension program at the University of Connecticut. I also direct the Connecticut Institute of Water Resources.
Hang on one sec, Mike, I want to try one more thing. Joyce, can you move that microphone right up to the computer, so that the camera can be good?
I'll speak as loudly as I can too.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, so, basically, the, the driving force behind all of this is stormwater. So, you know, please forgive me if any of you are well versed in these issues, I don't want to insult anybody, but I'm just, I'll very, very briefly talk about the reasons why we're doing this. So, stormwater is a big problem in our state and in fact, the whole country. The main drivers here, the main, what's going on is the changes that we've made to the landscape as we've developed it, as we've moved from a forested condition to a developed condition where we've got roads and driveways and buildings that cover up that landscape. Your town is a perfect example. You guys have nice areas that are forested. When rain falls on that undisturbed forest, that water moves down through the soil, it has a chance to get filtered by the soil, it becomes shallow groundwater, provides base flow to the local streams, and essentially is cleansed by that ecosystem. In contrast, when you go down to a developed downtown, that water hits those paved surfaces, it's channeled directly right off into the nearest water body, untreated. So, there's no treatment to that water, it has major disruptions to the ecological cycle, to the hydrologic cycle in those waterways. And so, there are, there are impairments to our waterways in our state because of stormwater. So, that's the, the thirty-second background of why we're even doing this stuff. Much of what I do is related to solving these problems. So, I, I deal a lot with what we call green stormwater infrastructure features. So, these are things like rain gardens, which is just a depression in the landscape. Can you hear me okay still?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this is just a depression in the landscape that collects some of that runoff from these impervious surfaces and lets it sink into the ground as it did before it was developed. They're often planted with native shrubs or trees or perennial vegetation, so they look nice, they're a nice asset, and they perform the stormwater function. We also are, have put in numerous types of pervious pavements. So, these are alternatives to asphalt and concrete that let water pass through the structure and sink into the ground below. There are also green roofs, so these are vegetated systems that can go on the top of flat roofed buildings, like schools and other buildings, and also water harvesting. So, these are the ways that we basically try to deal with that water, that's that excess water that's being generated, try to typically move things back in the other direction towards that natural condition to try to improve the quality of our water harvest. So, this relates to what Angus mentioned before about the MS4 program, that's the municipal separate storm sewer system program. So, these are state regulation, it comes with the Federal Clean Water Act. And the, the most recent permit that was promulgated five years ago required towns to deal with their impervious cover in their towns, to quantify it, to figure out where all of your stormwater outfalls are, and then to start disconnecting. So, there's a requirement to disconnect two percent of your discover starting in year three of the permit. So, about midway through that permit, we got a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to work with a number of towns in your area. And the, the basic gist of the grant is to perform a stormwater assessment of the various towns in the area, and this is done, we have students that are working on this, so we actually train the undergrad students that we work with on campus. They, it's basically a computer exercise first, so they come down, or they start in the office, use geographic information systems, Google imagery, and information from your town, like your public properties and other, other pertinent information that might, might be relevant. And basically, try to figure out what's the first cut of things that we could visit and evaluate for the potential to disconnect some of that impervious cover. So, then we take them to the field, so we visited your town earlier this summer, and evaluate the sites that they identified on the, on the computers. We figure out which ones might work, which ones are going to not work for whatever reason. And then the students compile all that information into a final report for you that allows you to, we've kind of narrowed it down to about five or so top sites that we would recommend. There's a little more information in there as well. So, basically now, what you have is a document that identifies some potential disconnects in your town. There are numbers in there that show the amount of water that this will treat, the phosphorus and nitrogen that will be reduced. So, there's, it's a real quantitative effort that the students have put together. And the best part, at the end of all this, after you guys select one of these practices that you think would be the best fit for you, we have at least $22,000 for each of the towns that are involved here as part of the grant to actually put one of these practices in. So, this is money that we can work with you to hire an outside contractor, if that's the most efficient way. You know, if there's too much of a burden on your public works, we can use it just to hire outside contractors, whatever works for you. So, that's the, the basic gist of everything that we've been working with Angus on. And the, there are two sites that we, that have kind of bubbled to the top. Usually, we try to target schools with these things because we, we, there's also a nice educational value to make these practices installed at the schools. Many of our environmental science teachers around the state use these things as part of their teaching. So, we like to try to do that if we can, but I know you guys are in a different situation because you're at the regional high school, and that complicates things. But there are other places that we've identified in this report. The two that, we've talked about most were the public library and the town hall. So, these are two of the sites that we are looking at to install a rain garden or what we call bio-retention type system. On the library site, it's basically taking some of the parking lot runoff that would be going directly into the river there, and having it sink into the ground before it gets there. And at the town hall, it's a similar type of thing, except it's taking roof runoff and basically disconnecting it from the existing pipe and the stormwater system that's there, installing a rain garden between the road and building there. So, that's the backgrounds. I've kept it fairly efficient for you, but please feel free to ask any questions that you'd like.
The, the rain guards, that is, that's a collection device that, that neutralizes, for lack of a better term, the water before it gets into the system?
That's right, so it's a rain garden.
Garden, okay, okay, I missed that part, okay.
That's okay, if you didn't know what you were looking at, you would think that it's just a landscaped area.
Oh, okay, alright.
The plants that are put in there, we, we'd like to have stuff that's going to look nice, that people are going to like to look at and take care of. So, you know, they, it, it basically, if you think about the landscaped islands that are in many parking lots, and you relate it to a belly button where those are the outies, a rain garden is an any, okay? That's the way we, the simple way we like to, it's just easy to remember it that way.
Is there standing water in them?
No.
Okay. For mosquitoes and things like that?
That's right, it's not designed to be a wetland, we don't want mosquitoes and nuisance insects in there. So, they're designed to infiltrate water, usually within a day or so after the rain.
You have a parking lot at the Yukon, and all goes through the asphalt.
Really?
Right, you have a parking lot up at Yukon that's like that, right?
Yep, we have quite a few of them actually, yeah.
Just water goes right through the asphalt.
Yeah, I've heard of that.
Yeah, I think we've really, you know, and when I read your reports and looked at your, at your locations and listened to you, to you guys present, I really like, I actually would like to talk with you more about the elementary school as well, that's a good entrance, it gets a lot of traffic.
That is our traffic.
And I almost, I almost kind of think I like that better than the town hall because of the visibility, but also because that's road runoff, which I think is a little more, has a little more impact than roof runoff. So, you know, as we, and I think I'll meet you at the library tomorrow morning.
Yeah, Dave's going to be down there.
Yeah, so we can talk a little bit more about it.
Oh, because educational for the kids?
Yeah, well, that's what I think, you know?
Yeah, we, we definitely like to, to do the schools if it's possible, so if you are up for that, we definitely like to explore.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No, I, I like what I hear.
Thank you.
That's great, Mike, thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure, any, any other question, just?
Alright, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Take care, guys.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Parks and Recreation request for accommodating and filming of Next Stop Christmas. You guys may or may not have read about, there have been, there has been some filming already for moving down in Essex, they went a little bit up in Chester. This film group has been working with Parks and Recreation to try and do some filming down at the landing. They were not sure when, what time, and how much of an impact that was going to be at one point. Carol was talking about closing, closing the landing at noon and keeping it open, or keeping it closed through midnight when they were doing, so that way there's no modern cars in the, in the film set in the eighteen hundreds. I spoke at length with them this morning, and at this point, it's a longer filming process. But my email to them was just to confirm my understanding, and he said this is where they're at right now. So, they're going to be filming in, at the Deep River Depot on Wednesday and Thursday, September first and second, from seven AM until 10 PM. Deep River Landing and Beach Lunch will not be closed to the public. They said there's no need for that.
No.
And that means that if someone wants to launch their boat, they'll have full access to both, access to both parking lots and, and to the launch area. And if someone wants to come and enjoy any aspects of the park, lunch, fish, boat, just hang out and look at the view, they have full access to both.
Or watch the filming.
Or watch the filming. They will have full access to that. The only impact that I see is that they're going to be bringing more train cars to the depot to, to do the filming, because they're older, more period pieces. And there will be parking a lot of their cars in and around the area. So, you know, the, the depot itself is going to be pretty busy. But I don't think, I don't think there's any real impact, and I don't see any real issue for the, for the town. So, Parks and Rec was asking for the Board of Selectmen's blessing before they get from the final go-ahead. That's the input that we have, and if you guys could make a motion to, to support that.
I make a motion that Park and Rec continue and approve the, the filming and help with filming of Next Stop Christmas at the, at the depot.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. And I, and I might just say in discussion, I, I was asked, one of my cars was in a film that was being shot in West, West Hartford back about a month or so ago. And, you know, they had a lot of people, and they had a lot of stuff, and, but a lot of the neighbors who were inconvenienced or whatever, for whatever, they were all around, and they just enjoyed seeing the activities of the movie making. The star of that movie was Sigourney Weaver, so everybody knows who she is. And it was, I, I enjoyed it.
She driving your car?
She didn't drive my car, my, my car was, was in the background. So, when the movie comes down, it's called Call Jane, when it comes out, my car might be in the background. But it was, it was a pleasant experience, and I wandered around where I could and talked to the neighbors, and the neighbors thought it was pretty cool too. And they shut down one of the main drags on West Hartford. So, this wasn't just an inconvenience down by the depot, this was a main drag on West Hartford.
I see, you know, if they stick to their word, I think that it really can be a lot of fun for us to watch the process, but also have a lot of fun to watch the movie afterwards, and see what, see what we recognize from the local landscapes. Mike, I think you have a question.
There, there's a liability contract that they signed.
Yeah, yeah, they have all their insurance, and Parks and Rec took care of all that.
Any signs down there that say Town Deep River, that we can make sure they're in the shop?
Deep River Depot?
I know there's a bunch of signs, but I'm not sure if they, if they say that.
Well, yeah, it's something, you gotta get some.
I know, I know. And that's over.
Well, I think it's neat that we can have our own little thing, I mean, they've been having Christmas in summer, you know, in Essex, and Essex is Essex, and, you know, Deep River, you know, we're all these unique communities, and if we can get in on some of it, I think that's great.
I think it's good for the town.
Yeah.
Alright, did we vote?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the audience of citizens. Now, we have a couple of citizens here, any thoughts or comments?
I do, Jane Samuels, Twenty-Four Elm Street.
Okay, Jane, go ahead.
I have two, two questions about the money that he was talking about coming from stormwater runoff. Who would decide, is that Sustainability Connecticut? Or who decides how that money would be spent if we can get it? That's my personal question.
The answer to that is it's not our money, we aren't spending it, it's, it's their money, and we just choose the location. And if we, if we can make it more efficient and get more done by supplying the town crew, then we can do that. But this is money that comes from this Yukon CLEAR program, there's not any town money or state money. It doesn't pass through us, it goes directly from CLEAR to any contractors that are involved.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. And two, could you go through the four people that were nominated for planning and zoning? What was the result of Stan?
All positive.
Uh, Marion?
All positive. Jane, everybody got put on.
Oh, okay, got you, you're, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I would, I would just want to make an, you know, make a announcement, we put a post out the other day, we'll put another post out tomorrow, schools starting this Thursday.
Yeah.
Be careful driving around, school buses and kids are going to be back out. But also pay attention to the Route Eighty Bridge, as we said, that, that bridge is not going to be completed until, well, hopefully before, but the, the deadline. but the deadline date that was set at today's meeting was August 7th. I'm hopeful, as we all are.
September.
September 7th. I don't want the summer to end, I don't want the summer to end. Yeah, September 7th, we're certainly hopeful that they're gonna get done sooner than that. We should see contractors, they're working like crazy, they're working all seven days, I think, at this point. Duane could speak more to the complexities of this. But I will say that this delay has nothing to do with the contractors. This has to do with materials that were purchased and fabricated off the site. Didn't have to do with the state DOT or with the contractors. It's just a glitch that's occurred. I'm thankful to both the state and to the contractor for working really hard to ensure that they did not have to buy and wait for a new piece to be fabricated, because that would have been six to eight weeks. So we are doing everything we can to make sure this gets done. But please remember, if you're bringing your kids to school, take the detour down to Iverson, or Centerbrook, then to Iverson, then to Warsaw Street, if you're going to the junior high school.
On that note, there was some chatter online that the school sent out a memo saying that school buses were gonna be allowed to go over the bridge.
School buses will not be allowed to go over the bridge?
Well, I didn't, I just, like I said, I wanted to clarify that.
That was talked about, that was part of the conversation, but it makes no sense, it's only gonna delay progress.
Somebody said that a memo from the school went out saying that that was gonna be allowed, and I don't see how that could be, but I just wanted to put it on the record that school buses will not be going through.
We're gonna have to have a town meeting, Joyce and I will schedule that for next week if we can. That town meeting will endorse or not endorse the appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission. It will also have to do with the appropriation of not to exceed $20,000 for the fire study, the need study. And it will also endorse the use of the state bond money for the improvements at the elementary school. So that'll be next week, I'm hopeful it'll be next Tuesday night if we can get this in the paper.
One more question?
Hang on one second, Jane, thank you.
Can I get an update on the food traps?
Yeah, yeah, we're working, we've been working for the last couple of months with our sustainability group and with the town of Chester. We've seen, if you've been watching the paper, Essex and Old Saybrook and many towns around the area have been adding a food scraps collection center at their transfer stations, excuse me. The idea of that is to reduce the amount of waste that goes into the transfer station, which will reduce, ultimately will reduce the cost. Essex began with three buckets, and they're up to six at this point.
What's a bucket?
Two, what is it?
About 50 pounds.
50 pounds, yeah.
About 500 pounds.
Yeah. So, you know, every pound that we take out of our transfer station costs less money. So we need to, I think we can work towards that. Number one, financially, it helps us, but it also helps us environmentally. The less garbage that we take to Ohio is better. We're looking at a open date of September 25th, right after Family Day. And we're going to do that, again, as we do with Chester already with bulky waste. Chester will be involved in this as well. Duane, if I forgot anything, please. That's a good idea, thank you. I forgot about it.
You mentioned Family Day. Fireworks are not gonna be on Family Day, they're gonna be on October.
Fireworks are in October, in conjunction with the Halloween trunk or treat that Parks and Rec has done the last few years. And that actually brings up the thing, there is, so Parks and Rec is planning a drive-in movie for over at Flathead Park for the evening of Family Day.
Or Devitt's.
Devitt's, sorry, Devitt's Field, yeah.
You walked right down.
On the old football field, yeah. Yeah, looks like fun, I think it's Jumanji, I think is the movie on the shelf. Looks like a lot of fun. So, and Family Day is coming fast.
Yeah.
Which I'm always happy if Family Day gets here, but I'm always sad because summer's almost over. It's fading like a tan.
Jane, you had a question?
Is the town meeting going to be only person or also on Zoom?
I think we will probably do that in person. We're just trying to play this all by ear.
Yo.
We're going to do, as of right now, it will be an in-person town meeting.
It will be adequate social distancing, and everybody should wear a mask, yeah.
Wear a mask, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.